What's the lot number? Or address?
Map and lot.
Are you filming now?
I am.
Who is waiting to get the map and lot number?
Yep, that's fine. And, and this is Mr. Peppin. Junior.
We're here with, uh, Peppins for the site walk on map.
And here is Mr. Peppin.
Hi. We're on, um, the map two twenty lot seven. And this is an application for our, um, Peppin and Sons. For a mineral extraction project located here off of the A-30 in Acton. Today, we're gonna be walking around the site with a planning board. And, um, we've got a number of things flagged on site. Uh, we had corner post land serving come out and flag, um, some resource protection areas, um, some aquifer protection areas. And we're gonna take a look at the site and see where the project is planned and go from there.
Good job. Yep. Okay.
You guys wanna hit this way first?
Be a long walk.
I don't mind walking. Well, maybe. I, uh, my battery's full.
Oh, they're already fast.
I'm not sure which map it is. There's one that shows the whole project. And then you have cutouts.
We need Kyle's college.
Actually, I got some from the other year and I, uh, I've been growing it and I got a pretty good amount. This year. Yeah, I'm telling them to go so fast.
Get it taken care of. No, it's good. Beautiful day. It's coming out here. Oh, should I go rain cold or gray coming down?
Jason, Jason, do you think we should leave for Joe? I don't know what to, you know, I don't know. Or maybe he should have brought him in this little side by side. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I can't really. We'll wait, we'll, we'll go to slower.
Should I ask him to bring him?
Joe might not come for the whole thing. He might just.
Yeah, but I don't wanna, you know, I, um.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I'll be able to leave too someday with my camera, you know? Yeah, he's not, okay. You know, I didn't know that once.
No, I know, I get it.
What did you say?
Oh, there's a flag, but it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a wetland flag. One of the, kind of up on the wetlands, uh, right through here.
Is this wetland?
Yeah, so it's right here. This, I think it's probably. So we walked in, there's a trail kinda underneath here. This is, I think it's probably this wetland right here. Here's the trail that goes up.
Don't forget it rained on yesterday too.
Oh, it rained like crazy.
You know, so.
It's probably made from, you know, the, the road being here and just made the whole.
Stuff running down the hill.
So that's, it's just a small wetland here.
Well, there's water and that'd be in there today.
Yeah, how much did you guys get? Did you eat quite a bit yesterday?
Uh, I don't know.
Around the trail right there.
Okay, so this is that little wetland.
Yep, right in the corner. So we can go.
Yeah, do you wanna walk in this way?
Oh, walk in this way?
I'm, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
You're right, that would be a good way to kinda loop around.
You wanna, you, well, we can stop them and let's go, no, okay.
We'll go here first and then we'll come back.
Yeah.
Got dark and then minutes later it was dumping. We had a pond over at our top in San. Dropkick Murphy's guy. Take you for a dropkick Murphy's guy.
Love him. I love him.
Really?
Nashville, North Carolina this year.
Really?
That year, get excited, get pumped up music.
It is, yeah, it really is.
Funny how.
No.
Yeah, but like all here, just all, this is all crap.
They are?
No, I.
Uh, you.
Cut all the trees in it.
I was in Vegas and I was at a really. Bar. Kinda what their thing was. Their bar, I don't know, somebody had said that they imported all their wood from someplace over there. Recreated an existing bar that was there. They had, uh, you know, I don't know the type of music it is, but the fiddle and all that stuff, you know? What they, what they actually call it.
Bluegrass?
No, 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 no.
No, it's like punk. Death metal?
Yeah.
Oh, like, uh, Vloggin' Molly. Yeah, yeah.
Dave doesn't wanna be on camera. He's camera shy. Yeah, we didn't find any gold out here, but.
Yet.
Yet.
You don't want gold, you want lithium ion, right? Isn't that what's the lithium? That's the, uh, the lithium.
Oh. Yeah, that was a close one. I'll be careful next time.
I just gotta hold a cross for a bit.
Right, oh, right. Didn't real, you know what I mean? Sloppy, slow.
These are all, I don't know if that bomb would be made, but it's all material.
Get trails.
Get a trail. This was originally the Valley Lumber's biggest piece of property. They were the biggest landowner in North Carolina.
At one time.
At one time, yeah. Yeah. But this was their biggest hole in.
Oh, yeah.
I remember when they bought out Gendman.
Oh, yeah.
And Gendman was the old Nike factory in Stanford.
Oh, yeah.
There's a Nike factory in Gendman?
Yeah, what street is that?
It's two oh two, right?
Yeah.
Back in the seventies.
That's where we get all our lumber, where it came from.
Who's the largest land owner now?
What?
Who's the largest land owner now?
No, I don't have no idea. Do you stay for the weekend?
Yeah. Last weekend, she was putting around the desk a little bit.
Yep.
I paid more.
Yep, his, uh, they rented that little sandbar for a while.
Yeah.
Then I think his brother-in-law rented it, Dave part of the thing, I don't know.
Oh, after.
Last week. Oh, last week. Actually, I had it like two weeks. Yeah, so he had it for a week and then his brother-in-law turned it a week after. Nice little place. Oh, you can't go wrong with there, yeah. Huge beach, the best beach on the lake. Stellar. She rents that place out. A thousand bucks a week. That's it, that's what I said, I go, holy smokes. Pretty, you know, really good steal. No dock though. They can't, you know, you could rent it, but it's swimming purposes only. But the lady, she, uh, when Dave was there, she saw the kids and everybody having fun, she went up and bought one of those floating mats. Yeah. She was, she was looking online to find like a paddle boat.
Yeah.
Just trying to really attract.
There.
Hooting dogs.
Same thing.
No, now the same wolves are in me.
Yeah.
Yeah, kinda interesting.
And then that middle white man. She owns both of them.
Oh, right.
And she runs out from all of the houses. Yeah, Tyler built it, yeah. And then she rents out that other one for thousands. I was talking to her, she goes around, she follows like the, uh, with these, uh, AKC kennel dog shows.
Yep.
Like a wiki, you know, like whatever it is, she walks. We were finding.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, because it was, yeah, it was a few between, it was two between. They have property next door.
Yep.
I'm getting this here too. I had one. Just there, just, uh, you know.
It's gonna have one on the way home, road home. The one on Saturday, five thirty, forty-five minutes, forty-five. Doesn't hurt that bad. Right. But now the same, my heart's pumping better than.
My father had one in the seventies, I grew a little. They have a long night.
Yeah, he had a couple more during the night. And I didn't think it hurt, my head, uh.
Well, it's trying to do like a high end.
Yeah, that was weird.
See right now the ground is starting to change, the, uh, the landing. Getting the smaller rocks and all that ledge, all that ground. Now we're just hiking the town.
Right, like the round, uh.
It's just kinda changing. And the weird thing is that I didn't know so much.
No way different, she was next time.
Oh, yeah. Why are you hearing squish?
Uh, slipping.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, I always went for.
Funny all these good trails.
Hmm.
No, the next one over with.
Oh, it's the next one over? I thought this was Red Gate that was bringing the town farmer. Chapel Town Farmer? Oh, this one brings you to West Shore?
Well, you can, you walk up West Shore Drive and then you can get on to the high side. This is probably pretty close to where the wash plant area would be.
You didn't stake it up for us? Punk a brush?
Here's where the gravel is, right here.
This, yeah, this is actually probably the extraction area. And then I think the wash plant area is right up in here. And I'm trying to see if I can find any flags.
Oh, there's a state right there.
See a state?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This was already all cut with cleat.
What are we looking for? What are we looking for here?
Uh, states.
Oh.
Flagging states.
We'll have him come going.
Well, I don't have the proper footwear.
Right.
You know?
We'll have him walk in. Want some reason that?
Come in this wagon, ignore it, you can come in this wagon and go right across. And it's just right here. Once you get close to.
Hot, my hole.
That's how stupid it is.
Right?
But if you walk down the road, this one gets the best idea. But that's how I, you can simply, you'll see how this goes straight down to the rest of the drive. And then you get an idea how high you are. You came in pretty flat. Right.
Yeah, I know, I, um, could you repeat? Could you repeat?
So right here is, it seems like a flat here.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna come down here, around thirty feet and go straight down. And go right across, you know, a third, four, whatever the elevation is, it's above the water table. So that West Shore Drive will have a buffer of thirty feet, you know? When we come in the first few days, we'll be high, but once we get down in, we're gonna just continue down.
You're saying that's gonna help with the sound?
Right, and the best thing to visualize it, that's how I operate is. When we walk down this road, you'll see how far the road goes down to West Shore.
Oh, okay.
Then you get an idea how much higher we are here than West Shore Drive. And how right in here we can take the gravel out.
Yep.
What makes it a good piece of property compared to the other pits in Acton, I know I've owned a few, is we're in the middle of nowhere on our property.
Go ahead, it's in the middle of nowhere.
It's more quiet, you know, being out here. And the West Shore Drive is gonna be far enough away and have a buffer of the ground.
Eight row two?
Eight row two.
Well, that's what people were concerned about.
Right.
Yeah, the noise.
A lawnmower has.
Yeah.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Okay, we, we, we're here, we're right here now?
I believe so, like right in here. If you can get that.
Yep, okay. And we came in from?
Kinda up here along this path. Kinda north of where we were gonna be proposing any work.
Is this marked out?
Uh, it was my understanding it was, so. We didn't probably get close enough to see the flags on the way in, but, uh, figure out a different route back and try and see it.
Yeah, 'cause this is our interest is the, the junction of this vernal pools buffer with the wash plant area.
Yep.
'Cause they're proposing to use their twenty-five percent of this buffer as part of this area.
Yep.
And then the aquifer protection line, is that on this map?
It is, it's.
Is it that line right there?
Yeah, it's this line, so we're staying out of, you know, the, the proposed wash area and stockpile area is all on the outside of the aquifer, um, protection area. Right, so, and then this is kind of.
But we're in the aquifer protection area right now.
Yes, we are, yep, yep, that's, we're up in here, in, on the inside of this. The, uh, I think if, when we walk down here, this will be flagged out. Um, maybe the buffer will be flagged out, but, uh, be able to see there's a grade break kind of in here on this hill. Where this drops down to this wetland, and then this stuff kinda comes down this way. So, I think, um, you know, any area that, that would be up in here would drain, internally drain, but also drain more, like, to the north. Since this is a little bit higher through here.
Yeah, there's a close-up of what we wanna.
Alright, so the.
Sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine.
You know, so we're up in here, like, uh, the extraction area is up this way, we came up this path. Um, and then, so we wouldn't have seen the, um, wouldn't have seen the stockpile area if it was flagged out. And then, see, this is kinda that grade break I was talking about, we're, we're at six fifty here and then it drops down forty, thirty, twenty, down to this vernal pool. Um, and this larger wetland. Anything up here is kind of sloping to the north, um. North, northwest, basically. So, but yeah, this should be, we should, uh, definitely try and get over here and see, this will be flagged for sure. Uh, we can kinda take a look at it.
Lead away.
Can I show you down, down this hill first?
We gotta wait for the other people though.
Alright.
If we go, then they're gonna wonder where we went.
How many people whistle? Who's out there, Jason?
And Matt and Chris.
Better than yelling.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Another block up here.
Found some flags, I think we found the wet, the vernal pool buffer over there.
Yeah. I was just sat telling these people about, visualize it right, 'cause we're all flat. We're gonna walk down and you can just watch how we gradually walk right down about forty feet. Then you get an idea what's gonna come out of here, this one area, over the next fifty years or whatever. So we'll walk down so you guys can see all of this. I wanna go see the wash.
Yeah, bro.
Check it out more fairly and come back this way.
Yeah.
See how we're walking right downhill, you can, it won't be long.
And we have to walk up it too.
You can already turn around and look and you can see the hill already.
Mm-hmm.
See the difference in the ground, when we walked back out, how it's all those big ledge?
Mm-hmm.
You don't see that now. It's all gravel.
They're all round.
All round, it's. No, it didn't. You gotta just keep turning around and looking back and you can see how, see how steeper we're getting?
Mm-hmm.
Here, this is where. No.
Where's that one, Gavin?
I don't know.
Dad, is there, there's a well down here?
All the water, yeah.
Yeah.
Show us where that is.
Package for you for a wild mushroom harvesting guy.
Well, the, the ones I know that are edible, I, you know, I can identify those.
Oh, great, we can use this as a, you guys wanna look at the plants real quick and see right where we are?
Yes.
This'll be a good.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, John, maybe you could probably paper ones.
Okay, we're, we're?
Monitoring well symbol.
All right there?
Right here in the middle of the extraction area.
Okay, how many acres right here? Oh, thirty acres, yeah. I'm sorry.
That's right.
Yes, we, and I welcome anybody to take a ride in our pit in town, we do that. And they, town comes in all the time and, uh, with a sound thing.
Straight ahead this way.
Oh, the festival meter.
Yeah, we're, we're under the sound thing all the time. Because, you know, that way is so far. They know that we leave by the road.
Yeah, that'll even, we'll be down in a hole, but we're also gonna create that berm on the, along the buffer back here. Out of sight and out of mind.
Hello? Yes. Yes. Yes, yes. Nope. Okay, alrighty. Yep, bye.
Yeah. You guys wanna walk to West Shore Drive and see how far it is down here? Turn around?
It's up to you guys, I.
We'll be right back. Okay.
I'm just trying to get the dirt on my feet.
I know, I hear, look at me.
You're gonna ruin your, uh, yeah, what is it, a petty?
Yeah, but, well, I was in the process of doing my petty.
Yeah, Jason asked me, didn't he? So I texted him and then he's like, oh, it never made it on the.
No. And I was aware of it, don't get me wrong, but, you know, it's not, you know, it's, I gotta, it has to be confirmed.
It's a nice, nice trail in the wintertime.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the snow, but really not snowmobiles are more dangerous than the four-wheeled and ETV. That's the way they do come through the, and that's where it's a big, it's all snowmobile damage. How much dust do you think will come out of there, like the airborne?
A lot.
Cuz I mean, I know the dust does affect. You know, well, people's health, but also aquatic release and all that stuff.
Matt? What's down this road?
It's a trail, it's a boat, it's a trail.
Waterboro?
Yeah.
It's a trail too?
This trail brings you a little further up Westshore Drive.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It kinda just works right here, sort of.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, I was, I'm curious. Oh, we're right here.
Yeah, we're right on wash, this is.
Oh!
So about a hundred feet, which you're right back at the top of.
Yeah.
Maybe a little less.
Oh, Matt, yeah, this is a nice piece of property. And Matt, and this. Adjacent to uh. I'm just curious, this roadway here.
This also, this brings you further towards Goose Pond Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Also kinda follows along Westshore Drive.
Right, right, adjacent to.
Right, so Goose Pond Road is to our right.
Mm-hmm.
And then this would be. So if you went left here, you'd be going to the end of Westshore Drive.
Alright, wonderful. Thank you for the clarification.
You're saying a hundred feet off this road, so it almost puts you right at the top of the hill.
Mm-hmm.
Not that.
No, just this little hill over here, daddy.
Oh, this hill, yeah.
Yeah, the one we just came down.
But as far as the gravel pits, visibility from the road, you're not.
You can't see it, good, good, that's what I.
Thick buffer vegetation here.
A lot of people were afraid of that.
Yeah.
That I spoke to.
Hundred, yeah.
But I said.
Early spring and fall.
David will do the right thing. Matt will do the right thing.
Yeah, cuz we're in the York County desert, we never get any rain in August and.
Right.
Except June, July.
The, this vegetated buffer is thick enough that dust would never make it out here to Westshore Drive.
Right. No, that's, where, where is that stream?
We'll go show you that now.
Have to you.
We have up the hill.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Instead of going straight, we take a left.
Okay.
That'll take us down towards the stream.
They got the dirt bike thing here today.
Oh.
They do things like that here, out here on this land, they've never even. For some reason, they never ever thought who owns it, it's never been. I've been told, people, I've been, I've been told out here with my four bike folks, I'm here a lot that uh. Especially in the winter, get off here, this is just for snowmobiles, I'm like, why does I own a land? I don't say anything, why bother?
That doesn't mean anything, David, that doesn't mean, what, so what's your point?
These are our trails.
Right?
Yeah, basically, I mean, if you really wanted, you could just say screw you.
No.
And uh, toast it all.
No. Now we want to enjoy it.
Well, yeah, but.
It would really, it would really mess up, like I say, I, I came here in the sixties on snowmobiles, I can't imagine this. Trail ever going away.
Well, that's a part of the east, the east block and south, they keep reworking some of these out here.
You just need to see, visualize walking up the hill. And then, that's when you kinda get where there's a, there's a big bank.
Now, are you digging near that stream?
No. Puffin and puffin day.
Yeah, you're gonna have to come up running with them in the mornings.
I can't, my morgue's in my knee. I'm, I'm doing thirty. I don't wanna talk to Matt.
Well, you know. The camera picks up a hundred feet away.
This thing what?
This hatch here is the buffer, is it? Is the, no, that's like, just to show you, like, to show you, like, yeah, that there's a, that this is kind of an extraction area. Uh, just to like. Bring it out a little bit on the plan.
So the out, outer line is the limit of the extraction?
Correct.
Which is probably about seventy-five from this.
Blue line. Uh, twenty-five from the edge of this.
Twenty-five from there.
And then, this, I think this is a seventy-five foot setback from the.
Stream itself.
From the, yeah, the, the extra stream. We should go up and look at this wash plant area.
We should, yeah, he wants to see that, we gotta find the flags for, there should be flags, we see for this. Aquifer Protection District, Dana should have flagged that.
Yep.
Um.
So I don't know if you wanna walk, we can walk up, we can walk up here and look for this wetland flag. And then just turn south and try and cut across.
Okay.
Over to here, cuz that's like the shortest from the, from the road.
Yeah, that's a good idea, that'd help us pinpoint it. Jason seemed to think that we had found this earlier.
Did you go down a big hill?
When we went.
It's like.
There was like, it was like kind of a rock outcrop here and then it did drop down.
Should be like twenty, thirty feet.
That sounds about right. Yeah, that sounds about right.
It's hard to know cuz all this would be flagged too.
Should be, yeah.
So it's hard to know if the flags are any different for the significant area or not.
Yeah. Well, they should be newer cuz that.
They should be newer, yeah.
They would've put that up this spring.
Oh, yeah. So, so you walked all this way?
What's that?
So you walked all this way?
I haven't, I walked all this.
Oh, okay.
You know, I was. Uh. Surveyor, we wanted to know, and then the wetlands.
Okay.
Couple different wetlands folks, and then we had a, a guy who looked at um, habitats, animal habitats.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
He walked everything, I driven, driven fast and looked at the entrance, but.
Yeah.
Come back this hard, we just.
Right.
No, I gotta, I wanna get something that should blow the compost out.
Second drive around and it's blowing it out.
It's pretty, it's compost down, it's all like wood chips, so it's pretty fine material.
But it is a lot of. One, actually, one of them was in the bucket, it's one of them.
So this was the building that you guys looked at, right?
It was on the.
Jason, like.
No, we haven't. We haven't got to the building, the buildings are over here. We're like.
The buildings.
Yeah, no, we're.
On the map, on the map.
We're still.
Already, yeah. So those, yeah.
So that's just, that's just kinda showing an area that, you know, the. It's not gonna be a building up there.
It'd be like a yard.
It'd be like a, you know, the, the big conveyor belts and uh. It's the wash plant itself, it's a removal, it's just kinda like an area, that's not actually a. Uh, a building, they're gonna resettle them. Yeah, several, we'll have to get them. Oh, yeah, yeah, he's already the step on, he's not significant. No, no, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm taking a picture for my kids.
Oh. I might as well, oh, that's so pretty.
Well, it doesn't mean it's. Probably hasn't been any period. No, no, it's, I don't know. This is one of the. Yeah, it's, I don't have, I don't have.
That's not on.
I don't know, I don't know where they. Yeah, it should be, maybe around the corner here. Right hand side, you can see the flag and people on the left. That's how we live. Yeah, right. Just get her on the corner here.
Now, you think the wash plant's on this side of the street?
Left side.
This is the wetland over here.
Yeah, when you think about how far we are from that road and that road. We're out here. Near Asbury. In the corner.
Close to it?
See anything, Matt? Okay.
Might as well come back and hold that.
Just gonna kinda follow along the.
Yep. Give it up, you're gonna have to take a shower. Give it up.
I took one this morning.
Take another one.
I could just walk barefooted.
Right, no, you're gonna go ouch each ouch.
You got it, Matt?
Now I'm gonna bleed for half a day.
Oh. Yeah.
Just give me another scar in my life.
Those are, those are battle scars.
Yeah. Oh, my grandfather said, if you didn't have a scar on your body, you haven't lived your life to the fullest.
I heard if you don't have a scar on your body, you're not manly. I don't know. That could be controversial today.
Alright, we're going this way.
Oh.
Matt, he's on the other side of the road now, he knows where the wash plant is.
We're going in there?
Well, I don't have the proper footwear.
You can see what they say. I had too much poison ivy this summer. When you look at, it's all dry, you know, it's all cracked. It puts so much product, yeah. So much product.
Yeah, me too.
It looks pretty straightforward. He doesn't have a lot of gravel here.
Right. I'm not wearing the proper footwear anyway.
They got you out of bed.
Well, I almost slipped, I almost slipped. Earlier. Well, they found, yeah. So, Matt, before you go in, could you tell me a little about that, cuz I'm not walking in there?
We, this area up here is where the um. We're proposing to have a little wash plant area.
Okay.
Which is where we would. Sort of wash inch and a half stone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe some other stone that we use.
Mm-hmm.
It's mostly for washing stone, there'd be. It's not part of the extraction area, we're not taking gravel out of this area, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so just to wash it and cleanse it.
Just to wash some of the material that we need for.
Okay.
Concrete production.
You guys, hear me said flags over to your right? Okay.
Oh, so we're finding some flags that.
Yeah.
Were set out here to mark that off.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna kinda take a look at the topography a little better and.
Alrighty.
Um, go from there.
Alrighty, thank you, Matt. Okay, we're on.
This is actually probably the very beginning of it, and I think that's the manmade. If you walk in there, you can tell that it's pretty well manmade in there, and they used to pull gravel out of there at one point in time.
Yeah, that was man, they built the dump out of that, up there supposedly, that uh.
You can cut that from the road too, if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, no.
I was telling, in geological terms. This right here is an esker. It goes flat, straight up, and straight down the other side. And it goes, and it starts, and that's right through my brother's pit, and it's right through the other side. This, you know, I don't know geological terms, but it's what it is, it's, and it's the same gravel. And my dad took in the early eighties, it's probably the same thing. I thought it was like a million yards here. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand yards. Thousand.
Okay, you saw the, the flag for RT up there? See, this is the railroad that goes through the RT area.
Yeah.
I said that at the planning meeting at the time, it was good for us, we just, you clean this bank here, and it's so steep and you dig into it. You're not gonna hear anything, anyway, cuz of the, and you can't see it from the road again.
So where are we now on the map, I'm just curious?
The entrances, the trail that we walked in on is here, but the actual entrance is, is just up a little ways.
Okay.
Um, we walk down here, you don't see the. I think we're right here on the edge.
Okay. And I came in, we're from.
Well, this is the path that we came in, and then we took Tonga right, right hand turn down here.
Okay, just wanted to know.
Does that have the um, proposed limit of excavation on it?
It does, and we're. So that's. Uh, no. No, we're staying, it's this. This hatching, this hatching goes up to the edge of the. N- uh, no, no, we're staying, it's this, this hatching, this hatching goes up to the edge of the resource protections, and so we're basically like this is not, you know, we're not gonna pull material out of this, this is kind of the, the finger here.
Mm-hmm.
High point.
Right, right.
But it's inside that resource protection area, so, you know, we'd start pulling back material back down here.
Outside of the RP, yeah.
So if we, so, and here's the road that basically goes right through the.
Right.
Um, but we can walk probably down this road till we hit this buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Flag, and then we'd be, you know, we could figure out a little bit back from that is where the.
Okay.
Um, extraction area would be.
Hey, Matt, you don't even have kids yet, with my friends. Alan Brown's got grandkids playing, that's, that's why he's football now. What the hell?
These kids are older than me. Alan's. Brian Brown's seven years old.
Guys, did you miss us?
Yes.
Well, you were walking in the woods.
Yeah, you missed you. I don't think you would have loved it up there.
Your father had come and rescue us.
It would have been a long walk trying to go back in to get you.
Oh, he says, oh, he came and, you know, he came to rescue us, because he was waiting, you know, for you to come back.
We got to pull our materials, even grave, uh, to, uh. Right, unless it was. Yeah. Those are the awkward. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is probably the start of the spine up here, Jason.
Let's see, this is straight up. Look at the public trees, it's straight up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're gonna be really.
You can't take any of that material, Dave.
What?
Or you can't take any of this from here, that way, because it's a source of resource protection.
Oh, okay.
Yep, oh, once we cross this flag, then.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is going, yeah.
Once we get on the other side of the line.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's another flag right there.
Yeah, this is.
And then you follow up, almost.
Right.
I can see it.
Do you have a flag going in the woods?
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta start on this side?
Right, yeah, right there, yeah, I knew that, yeah. All the way up to the roof.
We're gonna be down a big hole right here. You're not gonna see us from the road.
Those are the ones we're talking about right there.
Mm-hmm. That is some drop. Wow.
There's that flag over there.
If you climb up here, Virginia, it just goes straight up, and it goes straight down the other side.
Wow.
So I'm confused what you're taking.
This hummock right here.
This, this is like a, um, we call it an esker.
Yeah, so, it started back there, but you can't take that.
No, we have to be.
That's in this zone, is this the resource?
Yes.
It's within the buffer, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not even twenty-five percent?
No, RP doesn't have that. That's a DEP vernal pool.
Vernal pool, okay.
That's a vernal pool specific, um.
That's good to know.
Stipulation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how far you can go down here?
We can go, judging from the wa, the water table level, which is kind of over here.
Way down.
Five feet above it.
Five feet above it, yeah.
But the water table is, is higher up here than it is over here slightly, you know, so it's not.
It actually goes up, upgrading.
Yeah, it's not gonna be. Down to that level.
Right.
That wetland by the road is higher than this one.
Exactly.
Because the road goes up too.
The gradient of the watershed kind of goes uphill right here.
Yep.
So, we can't put a big hole in here.
We can't.
But we can kind of excavate across and take out the, the hump.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. There's another well further up the trail.
The good thing about this.
Look at that.
You see how high it is?
Yes.
It's not much of an impact on the whole property, because it's so high.
Right.
And it goes straight down the other side.
Mm-hmm.
Jason's got the topo of it on his map and his, um, computer.
So you can just skim across the hump, right? Could you excavate?
We're gonna take it all out.
We'll take it all out, it's gonna be flat, it's gonna be level here.
Alright, yeah.
In, uh, fifty, fifty years, whatever.
That'll take a long time.
That's the beauty of it, you did one little four acre ple, piece here, and it's gonna take a long time to get through the other side.
Mm-hmm.
How many acres total in this little esker section?
This is eleven acres.
Okay, sorry.
Consider, what is it, three hundred acres here, eleven here and forty in the back, that's it.
Yeah.
Wow.
Three hundred acres.
Thirteen?
Yep. Wow. Didn't realize how high the elevation is.
Yeah, isn't it wild?
Yeah, I mean, you don't know when you try to get it through. Would you mind next week if I just take my dog for a walk here?
No, of course not. You're welcome to.
Okay.
You're familiar with where to park now and?
Oh, yeah, oh. Now, this road has been, this roadway must have been here for quite a while. Log-in Road?
This has been here for a long time.
Yeah.
It goes up, uh, it connects over to, like Rudy Peppin's land.
Oh, okay.
A lot of snowmobiles come through here.
Mm-hmm.
To go up towards the, I guess what you'd consider the south side of Square.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you see the cactals?
No, it's not a.
Yeah.
Not a wetland, it's like a infiltration area.
Is Kyle ahead? I think we're starting to see Land Trust property to the left here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that flagged out?
No.
Okay.
For the top, you can see on the map.
Yeah, we should be able to see this trail on the map, I think.
Yes, you can.
And then we'll be able to kind of judge where we are.
How much land have we given to the Land Trust?
Ninety-three acres. And they're gonna have a pretty cool, I think one spot, they're gonna have a really cool view of Square Pond, where they go south like a picnic area.
Mm-hmm.
Before.
I wanna go see that.
We're out here.
Hopefully now.
We're almost there.
No, it's, we're.
I bet it's a little windy.
It's, uh, we've got a half an hour walk anyway, we're gonna go see that.
And there's probably no trail.
Go get your side-by-side.
Again, boo, there's no trail where we'd be going.
Okay.
It's all about that now.
Right?
I am gonna go.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. What a gentleman you are.
Kyle, we're probably starting to see the Land Trust piece to our left.
Mm-hmm.
Is that down right?
Yeah, so we're probably in here someplace. On this, this is the path.
You wanna show her on the camera?
Yeah. So we could walk up here, because we crossed over this, these, these boundaries, or this, uh, flagging.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't gotten to this vernal pool, uh, buffer yet.
Okay.
Um, so we could walk up to that, there's, you know, two contours pretty close together, it's going up a hill.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, we should see this, this, uh, setback here, uh, at some point, get a good idea of where we are again. The proposed donation area would be off to our left, if we're heading this way. Extraction area to the right.
Okay.
And there's our. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the significant ones are in, uh, in purple there.
Okay.
But the next should be probably shorter.
Yeah.
Well, the next one should be more detailed. You guys wanna keep some of us gonna hike up and?
Hiking up this way, or?
Calling it. Do you wanna walk across that, see where the, that next vernal pool is flagged or not? Buffered.
The buffer line was not flagged, um, but the, what the actual pool would be flagged.
Well, we had only asked him to do pretty much resource that over there, and, yeah, we were gonna save this for the second walk.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, okay, you wanted to look at this extraction area better the second time around?
Well, what we'd asked you to do, um, I think you had, um, the survey company was flag the, the building, the uh, vernal pool by the building.
Yep.
Um, wash plant area, or was re, uh, the Aqua Fort Protection District by the, by the building? Vernal pool by the wash plant, um, and then kind of show us some of the other stuff that was right in that little area, the road going up and through, and.
Right.
And I think we were gonna leave this section for the second walk, just because, so we didn't have too much going on in one.
Okay.
Um, but, that's up to the chairman.
Was it a bug?
You've already been up there.
Up here?
Mm-hmm.
Well, just to that point. That's fine, we can stop now.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, uh.
You're on, Chris. All right. Meeting, a meeting adjourned.
Yeah, meeting adjourned.
Okay, site walk adjourned, okay.